I call to order the meeting of Pasadena Pendent School District Board of Trustees in regular session on Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, in the boardroom of the Administration Building, 1515 Cherry Brook, Pasadena, Texas, at 5:30 PM. Board members present, Ms. Marisol Kiana, Mr. Fred Roberts, Mrs. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Kenny Fernandez, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicki Morgan. Board members absent, none. Let the record indicate that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of the meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. The invocation this evening will be given by Mr. Bailey, followed by the pledges by Ms. Kiana. Will you please stand?
Lord, pray. The only Father, we just thank you for this day that you've given us. We thank you for the opportunity we've had to glorify you today, Lord. Lord, pray for this time that we have together here in our board meeting tonight, that you be with us, that you guide us and direct us. Lord, we claim the promise that you'll always be with us. And, Lord, we pray for wisdom tonight. Pray for the school district. We pray for the administrators, for all the employees, Lord. We pray for them as they carry out their daily task. Those folks in the classrooms and those people in the support areas also. We pray for their safety, Lord. We pray for the safety of our schools and our children and their families. All of us, we ask, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag, our pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one The board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code Sections 551.074 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer employee concerning matters related to the superintendent's recommendations to hire administrative personnel and/or the superintendent's recommendations related to renewals, non-renewals, and terminations of contract for professional personnel. 551.074 and 551.071 for the purpose of considering the evaluation of the superintendent, any amendments to the superintendent's contract and related actions. 551.071 to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorneys due to the district under the Code of Professional Responsibility clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, to seek the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer and/or to consider legal advice regarding items specifically listed on the agenda. 551.072 for the purpose of discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We will reconvene in open session as quickly as we can, at least by 7:00 PM. Convening from closed session, and I welcome you each to the board meeting this evening.
We're gonna go ahead and shut those doors, for the sake of sound. Yeah, we can.
Dr. Powell, we have first special recognition, so can we begin?
Absolutely. Well, board members and audience guests, we're here tonight for some exciting announcements. We're gonna start with this year's Vanguard Community Service Award recipients. And just to let you know, the Vanguard Award was created years ago to honor high school seniors who have dedicated hours of volunteer work to serve the Pasadena area. Whether that involved volunteering time, actions, or talents, these students made a huge positive impact on this community, so we're thankful for their outstanding volunteer service. I'm gonna turn the microphone over to our counselors, who will present the Vanguard students from each respective high school. And we're gonna start with Mr. Steve Long, counselor from Dobie High School. So let me turn it over to Mr. Long. Thank you for being here tonight.
All right, perfect. Good evening. The first recipient for the Vanguard Award from J. Frank Dobie High School is Gail Eflalo. Gail has dedicated hours of volunteer work to serve at Memorial Hospital Southeast as a junior volunteer. She also serves the community as a member of the Key Club and oversees Phi Beta Lambda festivities. Gail plans to attend the University of Houston in major in biomedical sciences. Thug Ewan Voe has volunteered at Texas Children's Hospital, Love Michael, and the Key Club. Thug plans to attend Swarthmore College in major in biology with hopes of becoming a PA. Malia Actor provided aid for individuals in the community as a volunteer for two blood drives hosted by M.D. Anderson and Gulf Coast EFCU. Malia has also volunteered for visual arts scholastic competitions and at elementary schools in the district. She plans to attend the University of Houston in major in biology. Emily Rodriguez seeks to make a difference by getting out of her comfort zone, being consistent in finding different ways to give back to her community. She will be attending San Jac College and study nursing. Finally, Kathy Tran devoted countless hours of volunteer work in helping her community through Texans Children's Hospital, Key Club, and her church. Kathy plans to attend Texas A&amp;M and major in genetics. Thank you.
Let's have our Dobie parents stand up if they're here tonight to support their students, our parents from Dobie High School. If you could stand and be recognized. Thank you. I think they're gonna do a quick group picture in here. Katie, if you wanna come up and take that?
They're doing it at all 3:00.
Okay, great. That's okay, we'll start, then go ahead. Next school.
Ilse Martinez. When there is a crisis, Ilse Martinez is willing to lend a helping hand. This dedicated community servant has volunteered with Acadian EMS and HCA Clear Lake and has become a member of the Community Emergency Response Team. Ilse plans to attend Our Lady of the Lake University and serve in the military at Air Gael Galvan. As a volunteer with the Kennel Club and Espa Neuter Assistance Program, Gael Galvan is dedicated to preventing the suffering of animals. Galvan has also volunteered through the FFA program at CTHS. Gael plans to attend the Vet Tech Institute of Houston in July to become a licensed veterinary Quan Voe. Quan Voe loves robotics and enjoys sharing that love with others. As a volunteer, Quan has provided help for robotics tournaments and robotics summer camps. Voe also enjoys displaying CTHS pride as a volunteer for the campus's prom and fall festival. Quan plans to study electrical engineering at UT Austin. Christine Rodriguez. Christine Rodriguez has the red bluff Roadrunner spirit. Over the years, Rodriguez has served the campus through various events and programs, including the mother-daughter event, the father-daughter dance, and the ACE program.
Can we have our parents from CTHS please stand so they can be recognized? Parents here supporting, yay, thank you. Awesome.
And now here are the Vanguard's for Pasadena High School. Crystal Morales isn't tutoring, when she's not tutoring local students, she's serving as a volunteer at Memorial Hermann Greater Heights Hospital and as a member of Mayor Sylvester Turner's Youth Council. Crystal plans to major in biology at Texas A&amp;M and hopes to pursue a career in the medical field as a physician. Marissa Orta. As a volunteer at Pasadena Public Library, Marissa encourages others to achieve their educational goals. In her spare time, she also volunteers at Lily's Art Class, inspiring others to create. Marissa plans to attend Texas A&amp;M also to major in animal science in hopes of becoming And our last future, Aggie is Kimberly Ramirez. As a passionate community advocate, Kimberly Ramirez serves survivors of domestic and family violence at the bridge over troubled waters. Kimberly has also served the youth in her community by volunteering at Ritchie Elementary School in Southmore Intermediate. Kimberly plans to pursue a degree in psychology at Texas A&amp;M.
Can we have our parents from PHS please stand, Pasadena High School parents, and
For Pasadena Memorial High School, Donovan Baroti. As a coach for the South Belt Dolphins Football Organization and the City of Pasadena Basketball League, Donovan Baroti has had the opportunity to share his love of sports with his community. When he isn't shooting hoops, Donovan is volunteering at the Houston Food Bank. After graduation, Donovan plans to attend the University of Oklahoma and major in petroleum Janelle Miramontes. As a tutor and STEM event volunteer, Janelle Miramontes helps others learn the importance of STEM and education. She puts those STEM-related skills to work by volunteering at two area medical clinics. Janelle plans to attend the University of Houston to major in nutritional sciences. Alexia Villarreal. Alexia Villarreal is devoted to providing aid to her community's most vulnerable through the Houston Food Bank and Texas Home Health Hospice. Led by her faith, she also volunteers at St. Augustine Church. Alexia plans on attending the University of Texas at Austin and studying at the Macomb School of Business. Zaria Webb. Zaria Webb has served her community in a variety of capacities. When there were concerns about COVID-related staffing shortages during the election, Zaria stepped up to the challenge and served as an election clerk for Harris County. In response to the pandemic, she began volunteering at the UT Health Cooley Center COVID Vaccine Hub. Zaria plans to attend UT San Antonio to study psychology and neuroscience. Blanca Okana. Led by her faith to serve those in need, Blanca Okana helps to distribute food at the Bible Way Fellowship Pantry. She has also served her community by volunteering with the Houston Municipal Court and Baker Ripley. Blanca plans to attend San Jacencino College and hopes to become a political scientist. Congratulations, Math Vanguard students. And now will we recognize the Vanguard's from Sam Rayburn?
Can we have our memorial parents please stand and be recognized at this time?
Okay, first we have Ricardo Cortave. Ricardo Cortave is a Texan who cares. Ricardo has served his community as a volunteer with the Salvation Army and the Houston Food Bank, distributing food to those in need. Ricardo plans to attend Benedictine University. Aleah Frazier. Whether she's helping out with JROTC games and performances, campus open houses, or parades, Aleah Frazier has that Rayburn Texan school spirit. Aleah also participates in drug-free stands to help educate her peers on the harmful effects of drugs. Aleah plans to attend San Jacencino College and pursue a career in beauty. Alexis Garza. Alexis Garza is dedicated to making sure that everyone has a home. After Hurricane Harvey struck, Alexis helped place families in homes with the Red Cross. Not one to forget about our furry friends, she volunteered at Boston Terrier Rescue to help dogs find their forever homes. Alexis plans to attend Texas State University and major in secondary education. Jesus Angel Mendoza. Jesus Angel Mendoza serves his community on land or sea. Through high school, Jesus has volunteered at Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo, along with the South Belt Area State and the Texas Interscholastic Swim Coaches Association. Jesus plans to attend Texas State University and major in secondary education. Nolan Gohardo. Nolan Gohardo is always willing to lend a helping hand. Nolan has volunteered to help teachers clean out their classrooms for the summer and has helped intermediate school bands set up for concerts. He also served his community during the aftermath of Hurricane Harvey. Nolan plans to major in electrical engineering. Congratulations. And now here are the Vanguard's from South Houston High.
Let's have our Sam Rayburn parents please stand and be recognized, Sam Rayburn parents.
We are super proud to present to you the top five recipients from South Houston High School. All five of our recipients graduated on Saturday with their master's degree from San Jacencino College. We present to you Rebecca Aguilar. Rebecca Aguilar cares for her community. This hard-working senior has helped to clean parks and prepare food for those in need. During the holiday season, Rebecca spreads some holiday cheer by singing Christmas carols to the elderly. Rebecca is interested in one day becoming a social worker. Arlie Cruz. Arlie Cruz is a community servant with school spirit. Throughout high school, Arlie has participated in various service events at South Houston High School, as well as the Crawfish Festival and CF Klein. Arlie has already enlisted in the Texas Army National Guard. After training, Arlie plans to attend San Houston State University to study criminal Sierra Robertson. Sierra is dedicated to making sure that no one in her community suffers from hunger. Throughout high school, this community servant has volunteered for Meals on Wheels, the Houston Food Bank, in addition to planting trees as part of the Buffalo Bayou Beautification Project. Sierra plans to join the Coast Guard Reserve and attend college to study photography. Winkie was taught early on to which much is given, much is expected. He has dedicated time tutoring ECHS students and volunteered at the ECHS Rising Sophomore Ceremony. Lanen has also participated in the building of a park right here in Pasadena. Lanen plans to attend the University of St. Thomas and has been awarded a Presidential We also have Hudson Voe, who is unable to be with us tonight due to work commitment. Hudson is led by faith to serve. As a volunteer, Hudson has spent time serving a church and women's shelter. Hudson is dedicated to ending the suffering of animals and has volunteered at a community animal shelter as well. Hudson plans to attend Texas Tech University and study computer science. Thank you to all of this year's Vanguard's recipients for your contributions to the community. Congratulations.
Can we have our South Houston parents please stand and be recognized or wave? Awesome. We're gonna get a couple of pictures before we have these amazing students leave our presence, so if we could get a few pictures, parents, if you wanna get pictures real quick. We do have cookies and water and things out in the hallway. If you wanna enjoy those before you leave, they are out there for your taking and your enjoyment. So, board members, what an awesome group of students who gave their time and their effort and their talents to help others. Couldn't be more proud. So we're gonna have this group of students follow Mr. McCarley to my left. And, parents, if you wanna make your way with your students to enjoy more pictures or cookies, this is the time. Thank y'all for being here tonight. We're gonna start bringing in our visual arts students and parents. So again, Vanguard parents, if you wanna make your way with your student, we're gonna bring in the next group of students and parents. So, board members, next, we're gonna recognize some amazingly talented art students, but we're waiting till we get our parents in here so they can witness this. And then, of course, we'll have Shannon Regozza come up to the microphone to make sure that she describes the talent and, of course, the awards that were given to this group Thank y'all for being here this evening. We're still bringing in our parents of our talented visual arts students. They can find a chair real quick, and then, of course, we'll bring Ms. Regozza up to All right, I think we have all our parents here, so we're gonna bring in Ms. Regozza. If you'll step forward, Ms. Regozza, for those of you who don't know, is our finance coordinator. We're gonna have her come to the microphone and start with the presentation of awards. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, Board of Trustee members and Dr. Powell. It is with great honor that I recognize-
Okay, let's get the microphone closer or take the shield off, because we're not hearing and we won't record it. Sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening, Board of Trustee members and Dr. Powell. It is with great honor that I recognize individuals that excelled and represented their schools in visual art competitions. The vase competitions are leveled, elementary, intermediate, and high school. The mission is to recognize exemplary student achievement with a standard of excellence in which to achieve and is the UIL equivalent in art. Jurors look for originality, technical expertise, and the interpretation of the student's written intent. The students and their teachers worked extra hard this year to showcase their talents and dedication to their art projects and were awarded these top recognitions in the region. PISD had two students that achieved the Top Team Award, which is the top 10% of all entries. Our first recipient is Sandra Rubio, 3rd grade, Gardens Elementary. Kathy Sanchez. Kathy Sanchez, 5th grade, from Malillo. Junior vase awarded the Platinum Award to four of the students, which is also in the top 10%. Haley Parsons from Bondi, Julian Harris from Bondi, and Sofia Castillo from Roberts. The high school vase event was entered by 1,200 students in the greater Houston area and eight advanced through multiple rounds of judging and were chosen as the top 10% and advanced to the state competition. They are Janelle Barrario from Dobie, Samantha De La Cruz from Dobie, Jimena Medina from Dobie, Isela Munoz from Dobie, Angel Aguilar from Pasadena High, Isabella Avorio from Pasadena Memorial, and Hugo Escareta from South Houston High School. Would the hard-working teachers please stand and be recognized, and the principals as And lastly, would the parents of these fantastic students please stand and be recognized for your support?
Awesome. Thank you, parents and family members. We're gonna take a couple of pictures, so let them get the students lined up. If you'll move down just a little bit, we wanna get it on our social media and our website, so, want all these amazing artists. So we're gonna do two lines. Our older, taller kiddos, will you get in the back? Dr. Stallings, if you wanna go get the aquatics parents lined up?
People are tired.
All right, let's hear it for these amazing, talented artists again. Parents and family members, we have cookies outside in the hallway and waters, if you'd like to enjoy those with your students. We're gonna bring in our aquatics parents next for their students to be recognized. So thank you again for being here this evening, and thank you for supporting your student and their amazing talents. Next, board members, we're gonna bring in some of our amazing Dynamic Duo coaches. I think you're gonna recognize these coaches, and they're gonna bring in some of their students, so we'll let the aquatics parents have a seat, and we'll get the coaches going in just a minute.
Hey, Jordan. I didn't recognize you. Oh. Bring the spoon. Bring the spoon. There you go. All right, so we should have our parents now from our aquatics talented kiddos that
we're about to recognize. Board members, I'm gonna start off with introducing, and I don't think they need introduction, but Robert Kelly, our longtime head aquatics coach at Sam Rayburn and Pasadena Memorial. And, of course, I said the Dynamic Duo, Darla Kelly, head aquatics coach at Pasadena High School, and I heard you won another amazing award. Definitely deserved. And they're gonna introduce the student athletes from Pasadena ISD who received academic all-state honors for this school year 2020-2021. So I'll turn it over to Coach Kelly and Coach Kelly.
Thank you. And thank you for letting us take the masks off. They have trouble hearing us at practice.
Yes.
At this time, we'd like to introduce our sons. I'm Robert and Darla. As I said, we have 12 amazing student athletes we're gonna introduce that were named to various all-state teams. We're gonna start off from Pasadena High School. She's a first-time recipient, Anna Mercado.
Yeah, they're not in order.
From Pasadena Memorial High School, Junior Zulema Pica. From Pasadena Memorial, Junior Cynthia Martinez. From Pasadena Memorial, Junior Rachel Del Angel. From Pasadena High School, she's a senior. She received this award last year. So she is a two-time recipient, Mary Jane Rubio. Another one from Pasadena High School, senior Fernando Lara. He also won the award last year as academic all-state. Now, we have three associations that gave these honors. The Texas Interscholastic Swimming Coaches Association, the Texas High School Coaches Association, and the Texas Girls Coaches Association. So we have some students getting multiple awards. This time, as a senior, he was in here earlier for another award. He is a two-time recipient of Texas Interscholastic Swimming Coach Association and was also named Texas High School Coach Association Academic All-State Team, Jesus Mendoza. Also a senior at Rayburn. He was named last year. Academic All-State is a junior and he made it twice this year, Felix Aralano. This young man was named it last year. This year, he was named both Texas High School Coach Association and Texas Interscholastic Swimming Coach Association. He will be taking his talents to the U.S. Naval Academy to dive for the midshipmen next year, Brian Strickland. This young lady is a senior at Rayburn. She was named to three different teams. She is headed to McBurney University next year to dive for the Warhawks. She was named to the Texas High School Coach Association, Texas Girls Coach Association, and Texas Swimming Coach Association Academic All-State Teams, Kelly Torres. She was also earned the award last year. She's a four-time recipient. Yes. This young lady received it as a junior. She received three awards from the same associations: Texas High School Coaches Association, Texas Girls Coaches Association, and Texas Swimming Coaches Association, Ashley Walker from Pasadena Memorial. And finally, this young lady was named it last year. She is a four-time recipient. Texas Girls Coach Association Academic All-State from the Texas Swimming Coaches Association and Texas High School Coach Association, senior from Sam Rayburn, Elena Garcia.
Let's hear it again for our coaches and our students. Congratulations. Let's have our parents of these fine students stand up, please, and be recognized. Our parents who support all the practice and the hours and hours that go into the sport. We're gonna get a few pictures for our social media. Darla, if you want to come hug us afterwards, you feel free. Let's get a couple of pictures. All right, let's hear it one last time for our swimmers and divers. Way to go. Parents, feel free to go with your students and get a cookie or waters. Enjoy yourselves. Thank you for coming tonight. We appreciate you. We're gonna bring in our CTE students. So now, our CTE students. We're gonna bring our parents in. So we're gonna get our parents in. Or do we have all our CTE parents?
We have so many. We're going to do three different groups.
Okay, great. Well, that's good to hear. I love hearing that we have too many students winning awards, is what I hear you saying, Tanya.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
I love it.
Yes.
Okay, board members, then we're gonna get started, if that's okay. We have Tanya Hager, no need for introduction, our Executive Director of Career and Technical Education, who will introduce the students who qualified for a national competition, as well as the state champion archery team from Pasadena Memorial High School. So we're gonna get started and I'll turn it over. Take it away.
All right. Thank you so much. Good evening, board members and Dr. Powell. It is an honor to be here this evening to recognize individuals who, under the guidance of their dedicated advisors, have excelled and represented their schools in a number of national and international career and technical education competitions. As you know, CTE student organizations are an integral part of the educational process. They are an extension of the classroom. They build leadership skills in our students and they allow them to network with professionals in business and industry. This year, we had a total of 67 students advance to the international level of competition, many of whom are with us here tonight. I have to say, during a year that was dominated by remote learning and virtual competitions, this is pretty phenomenal. I have to commend these students and their advisors for their dedication and ability to persevere during trying times. So I would like to start by recognizing the Business Professionals of America students from Sam Rayburn High School. These students advanced in the Administrative Support Team Event. First, we have Alexis Fernandez, Kimberly Garza, Socorro Gutierrez, and Isa Lopez. Isa also advanced in interview skills. Also, from Sam Rayburn High School, we have a group of future educators who we hope will come back to teach in Pasadena ISD. These three students advanced to national competition in lesson planning and delivery. And before we get to them, I failed to introduce the advisors for VPA. I'm sorry. Mr. Mohabbat Alom, Ms. Billy Pardon, and Ms. Teresa Sarabia. So thank you. All right, let's go back. Sam Rayburn High School Taffy Future Educators. We have Elizabeth Rangel, and we have Leslie Rivera. Their advisor is Ms. Carissa Haynes. The next group I would like to recognize is our District Robotics Team. This group comprised of four students from Lewis Career and Technical High School, advanced to the VEX World Robotics Championship. In addition to advancing to world competition, these students also received the Excellence Award. They were the robotics skills winner and were crowned tournament champions. And two of the members are here tonight, David Gomez and Kwan Bo. Their advisor is David Scarsella. Beautiful. Okay? Yes. Okay, yes. Will the parents of all of these students please stand to be recognized? Students, congratulations again. We're gonna take a quick picture of this group and then we're going to bring in a second group so we can recognize them as well.
All right, everybody smile. Here we go. If parents, if you want to get a quick pic, okay, we're heading out. Parents, quick picture before they head out. Anybody? All right, we'll let them. There we go. Mom's gonna get one. There we go. Here we go. Everybody smile again, real quick. All right, then we can head out. And there's cookies and drinks for y'all to enjoy. And we just thank y'all for being here and supporting your student. That's a lot of hard work right there. So let's hear it again for our students. And parents, if you're here for your student and they haven't been recognized yet, please stay because this is only-
We have more.
Yeah, we have lots more.
All right. We actually have three campuses whose National Archery in the Schools Program Team was also a national competitor. And so congratulations to these students and advisors. And we're going to start with the Lewis Career and Technical High School. We have Angel Correas, Malik Elhanawi, Elena Gibson, Carson Hutcherson, Ilse Martinez, Addison Masters, Nicholas McCartney, Timothy McCartney, Alejandro Mendez, Jasmine Rivas, Susannah Schuster, Justin Sears, Logan Bannock, and Edwin Vasquez. Their advisors are Brandy Gualtney and Alan Masters. Parents, will you stand to be recognized?
Okay, we're gonna get some pictures from our district photographer. And then also, parents, if you want to take a quick picture, we'll get them all lined up here in a nice group. These are our amazing archery students from CTHS. And let's get our instructors in there. Let's get our instructors with them, real quick. One more round of applause for this amazing group of students. All right, we'll have this group of students head out. We've got cookies for you. Be sure and take one with you or enjoy it while you're out there while we get our next group settled up.
All right, our next group is also a very large group, but a small group here tonight. From Sam Rayburn High School, we have advisors Deborah Lang and Tegan Born. And their team representative tonight is Simi Watley. Congratulations, Sam Rayburn High School Archers. So if we want to get a quick picture of this group, we will bring our last group in.
Get our representative up there and we'll get a quick picture right in the middle.
Team representative, Simi Watley. And proud mom is there taking pictures. Congratulations.
All right. Thank y'all for being here and supporting your students. I know it's a lot of work and awesome instructors as well.
Yes. Okay, the last group I would like to recognize is from Pasadena Memorial High School. And this group, led by Mr. Lloyd Love and Mr. Sunny Mills, not only advanced to national competition, they did it in grand style as they were crowned the state champions in 3D archery. This group competed against 40 teams throughout the state and placed first. The archery program has had such a history of success and we are incredibly proud of them. So from Pasadena Memorial High School, we have Juliana Ayala, Julia, Julia Ayala, Dean Blevins, Greg Carringer, Haley Grape, Eric Guerra, Madison Hoop, Bradford Husband, Alejandro Jaimez, Brian Jenkins, Eric Johnson, Devin Mangonaro, Zayla Martinez, Emily Olvera, Jacob Serna, Avery Speaks, Shayla Stringer, Cole Yurdialis, Francisco Valdez, and Aurora Williams. Like I said, advisors, Mr. Lloyd Love and Mr. Sunny Mills. Will the parents of these state champions please stand to be recognized? I also want to thank all the principals and CTE assistant principals for their commitment and continued support of career and technical education. Can you please stand to be recognized? I know here we have, from Lewis Career and Technical High School, Mr. Steve Fleming. I don't know if you're still in the room. Assistant Principals Tom Lee, Jessica McCoy, Chad Phillips, and Kristy White. From Sam Rayburn is Vanessa Reyes and Assistant Principal A.U. McCarsel. And from Memorial High School, Principal Jeremy Richardson and Assistant Principal Vanika Harris. Thank you all so much for your support. And board members and Dr. Powell, thank you all so much for your continued support of all of our career and technical education programs. We appreciate it so much. And let's give these state champions one more round of applause.
Awesome, awesome. So proud of our students, our instructors, and of course, our parents of these memorial mavericks. Way to go. We've got cookies and waters out there for you to enjoy. And thank you, parents, for being here and supporting your students. We appreciate it. We're gonna bring in next the naming of principals. So those that are here for the naming of principals, thank y'all. Good job. Congratulations. Thank you for what you did. So we're doing a little bit of a move of people that are being named in our personnel section, whether it's for principal, counselor, you name it. We're gonna bring those folks in and staff members from the schools at this time. So last but not least, board members, as you know, we have two members I'd like to recognize who are stepping down after this evening. So I don't know if we can get the doors and get folks in so we can get a little quieter here. But as you know, again, part of our team of eight will be stepping down after this evening. So I want to take just a minute to recognize them. They may not like it, but I want to do it anyway. Mr. Fred Roberts, who has served the Board of Trustees for 28 years, 28 years in a volunteer position. He has definitely had a hand and a role in supervising three different superintendents, helping with successful bond programs, TRE, and countless achievements, countless, this was just a sample tonight, of achievements by students and staff. I know he would say it best, but I have no doubt that he always had students from across the district as his number-one priority in every- the district as his number one priority in every decision he made. Don't you cry.
Oh, no.
Okay, don't you cry. Mr. Roberts, you will be truly missed and what are we gonna do without his humor, people? What are we gonna do? I'm not real sure, but we would like to turn the radio over to him, oh, the radio. I've had a long day. We'd like to turn the microphone over to Mr. Roberts so he can say a few words.
You know, the only thing, I hope I was a little help in this group and I served with great people here and I worked with great people with the school district. I've, you know, started coming up through here, saw young people. There is one right there, Guajardo, right there. That's her maiden name, I think. Yeah, okay, well, she was a catcher, you should have seen her, she was something else. Anyway-
You talked about softball, didn't you?
Yeah, anyway, but it's been interesting. And, you know, you sit here and if you'll sit here and be quiet for a while, you can learn a lot more than you realize and you realize that these people out here, they have kids' hearts, they have their heart in place and I want to thank y'all because I've grown with y'all more than you've grown with me and so I appreciate everything and I'm just down the street if you need me. Re-elections are in two years, I can always sign up again, so consider that a threat. Alright, thank you. You know, I was a lot younger in the beginning.
Well, there's a few pictures in there that prove that.
My hair wasn't as gray, but I colored mine.
For those of you that don't remember, Fred and I came on together 28 years ago and I will surely, surely miss him because it's been wonderful to sit beside him for these last 28 years.
I have to say that I was fortunate enough to recruit Fred to this position. I remember meeting at Olive Garden-
With Nancy Teck-
Nancy Teckelman and I met with you and you were very willing.
I didn't know what I was getting into.
We didn't promise just one meeting a month though, did we?
That's right.
You've been a great asset to this board and I'm gonna miss you tremendously.
Yeah, I'll miss you too, all of y'all. It's, like I said, y'all have been more to me than I have y'all, so thank you very much.
Well, thank you Fred for your service because you always had kids' hearts first. We appreciate it, thank you.
Well, also, board members, we have Mr. Jack Bailey stepping down who has served the board proudly for 12 years, working tirelessly on the PISD Education Foundation Board with projects like the McDonald's Invitational Basketball Tournament. He started the Invitational Golf Tournament. He has given countless guidance and counsel on major district initiatives like the budget process, strategic planning, just to name a few. So Mr. Bailey, we thank you and we will most definitely miss your leadership and your friendship and we'd like to turn over the mic to see if you'd like to say a few words.
Hopefully y'all don't miss me too much. Kathy and I will still be a part of this district in several of the areas that Deanne just mentioned. Like Fred said, you know, when you sign up to serve, normally you're the recipient and that's where I see me. You know, as I look around this room, I see people that I didn't know 10 or 12 years ago, but I know now and I call many of them friends. And, you know, I'd like to say a thing, we stand on the shoulders of some folks and I remember the day Frank Braden called me and he was sitting in this position four seat and, you know, it's been an honor to follow Frank and for all the things he did for the district. It's not what I did for the district, it's what y'all did for me though and I would like to say, I don't, I've always strived for excellence in anything I did. And one of the reasons I got on this board was because I saw Pasadena School District and what it was. I went to school here, I graduated from Sam Rayburn High School in 1967. I don't, I don't, there you go. I don't know of a group that seeks excellence more than this group. Y'all are a committed group, you're a group of vision and like has been said, the decisions that y'all make and the things that y'all do every day, we had paraded right through here a while, just a while ago and you can multiply that by whatever multiplier you want, there's great things happening in this district. Contrary to anything that we might hear the rest of the evening, there are great things happening in this district. There's great people working every day to make those things happen. And I told several of those folks that came through here, the same thing I tell them most every time I see them, thanks for what you do every day in your job. So I thank you, it's been my pleasure and Kathy and I aren't going anywhere.
I'm not happy about it, but I know he's going and he has been a phenomenal board member. He's always got his head on straight. He always cared about what happened to our students and our community and our teachers and our district in whole. Been a phenomenal board member, such is Fred. Thank you, Jack.
We're gonna miss your wisdom, your kindness, your generosity, and your friendship.
You know what I'm gonna miss?
No, I don't want to hear it either.
I'm gonna miss sitting here looking down there trying to figure out what you're fixing to say and then you start smiling and then I start paying attention and most of the time, I think, most of the time, you made sense. And so I appreciate you and, you know, I really didn't know you before, before you got on this board, but you're a good friend and I appreciate that and I'll be here if I can ever do anything for you.
Thank you, Fred.
You bet.
So thank you both for your guidance, your confidence in my leadership, has been much appreciated, and your selfless service to the Pasadena ISD community. Let's hear it again for these two fine board members.
Board members, I'm sorry-
That's it, for special recognition.
Board members, at this time, I'm gonna be taking a point of professional privilege and I'll be changing the order of business because we have so many that we need to recognize. We're going to consider the personnel agenda items first, that's gonna be next, and then we'll return to public comments. So let's start with Ms. Kiano.
Madam President, I move to approve it and it's A through D.
Motion has been made by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Roberts, that we approve addenda pages A through D.
D.
Okay. Any discussion?
Seats right here, seats up front.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. And Ms. Kiano, I know you want to introduce these.
Absolutely. Do we have Ms. Mariana Bro with us this evening? Congratulations. You are our new assistant principal at Pearl Harrell Elementary. Do you have any family with you tonight?
Yay!
Would you like to introduce them?
Yes, I have my husband Eddie Bro, my son Julian, my so-called family over here, my wife's family.
Awesome. Well, congratulations to you. Congratulations to our new principal at Atkinson Elementary, Mr. Christopher Bowie. We are very excited for you. Do you have any family with you tonight?
My parents are at home, they're an hour away and it's difficult for them to travel, so they're there, but they know, so they're very proud of me.
So are we.
Thank you. But I do have Atkinson here, New Jersey, and over there, but my little family who I love and cherish in my heart. I've been with Diane for 13 years and Kenny Van for 13 years and Carmona, so it's a very exciting move for me, but I'm definitely gonna miss them. I have learned so much and grown from them, also from Dr. Powell and Alita and all of the others, everybody else, so I appreciate everyone's help and support and I'm excited.
And just a reminder, the staff asked for a trilingual principal, we found it.
Mr. Powell served 25 years. Ms. Ortiz served 26 years. 27?
Your family, family might not be here, but this is probably one of the biggest supports we've ever had here for one person, so that's pretty, pretty good. Congratulations. Next, I'd like to wish congratulations to the principal, our new principal at Morales Elementary, to Jennifer Candado.
I am here with my husband Jonathan and my youngest son Jacob, the other two Bella and Elijah, they're at Pasadena Memorial finishing their concert. And with my Morales School family, it's such an honor and because I've been there my entire 17 years and so I am so glad that I'll be able to lead this team.
Awesome. Well, we are very excited for you as well.
Congratulations.
And finally, our new principal at Sparks Elementary is Ms. Erica Salazar, sorry.
This is my dad Art Guajardo, my mom Delia Guajardo, and my youngest sister Michael Guajardo, and I also have Dan Ebly, he's my principal at Keller. And I do want to point out Ms. Ortiz because I am a product of the Inspired Administrators and she let me apply for that in my second year on her campus. And I do want to thank the board because this is a three-degree position and my foundation was here at Pasadena ISD. Mr. Roberts gave me my degree that day and without that great education foundation, the rest cannot happen. And so I'm so glad to be back in my home district and continue the journey with Sparks Elementary and also my fellow principal coworkers that I'll be with.
Awesome. So this is a special night for you.
Yes, very special.
You know what, if y'all have an annual team, I'm gonna tell you, pick her up. She can play.
Well, congratulations to all of you, we're super excited and we are a huge family here, so congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Kiano. We're gonna move to consideration and possible approval of the superintendent's summative evaluation.
Madam President-
Sneak out, that's okay, no one's gonna get upset if you sneak out. Yeah, we're, they've been waiting a long time.
I move that the board approve the superintendent's summative evaluation as discussed in executive session.
Keep going. We'll keep going. Okay, maybe we won't.
Motion by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Deanne, as always, we say you're doing an awesome job, you're an incredible superintendent, we love you.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you for your kind words.
Next is consideration and possible approval of the amendment to the superintendent's contract and related actions.
I move that the board approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract as discussed in executive session.
Motion by Ms. Kiano, seconded by Mr. Roberts, is there any discussion? Any none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval, is this part personnel?
Yes, we'll keep going.
Okay. Consideration possible approval of CSP number 19, I'm gonna have to put my glasses on. Number 19P-027LP, contract renewal year three of five with Gallagher Benefit Services for Employee Benefits and Insurance Consulting Services at a cost of $200,000. Who made that motion? Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts, discussion?
So board members, tonight we have Roger Montemayor here from Gallagher as well as Joe Blase from McGriff, just to let you know they're here representing tonight.
Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor-
Pardon? I'm sorry, I've got my papers mixed up. I was corrected by Ms. Lopez and thank goodness I was. This is not the right insurance, let's go to health insurance. It's Maggie Parker who's representing Gallagher tonight, so Maggie, I apologize, she's the senior account executive, so we've got two insurance items on the agenda tonight.
All, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Certified personnel, you might note in your agenda, both certified personnel and support personnel, those are for information only. So at this time, we are going to go to public comments and I have a, something that I need to read to you before we begin. If the public comment is an open session, this portion of public comment is limited to speakers who are addressing items listed on the open session portion of this meeting. We ask that all speakers refrain from using profane or vulgar language. Complaints about an individual student, employee should seek resolution through the district's grievance process outlined in the applicable Pasadena ISD Board Policy DGBA FNG or GF. Along those lines, we ask that speakers respect the privacy rights of others and in doing so, refrain from naming employees and our students during the public comment portion of the agenda. Titles may be used instead. Remember, the admonition goes for positive or negative comments. Each person will, each person will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. And Mr. Roberts is gonna be our timekeeper and he will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. So first, we have Mr. Brian Santa Maria. And if you'll approach the microphone and as soon as you get there, your timing will start.
Mr. Ryan, I will stand up when you have one minute left.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian Santa Maria and I am here representing a lot of people. I think for myself today, I'm really proud to have this stage. I think there's a lot of kid here, a lot of kids here who would appreciate this scenario today for different reasons. I'm one of those kids that got lucky to be standing on this podium today to be able to speak to you, so with that in context, really, I'm really happy about the ceremony the graduates just had, I think, beautiful thing as an educator myself, being able to see those lessons passed on as children, right? And I really, I really hope that our future, you know, does represent what was shown here today and more than anything, as you see all these supporters here today, expressing our concerns really comes from a place of passion, a place from ancestry and a place from our children's future. So that's what we, our voice, voicing today, is a lot of these ideas and desires, just like we all want, to live cohesively with the things that we work for. So representing a lot of the voices that can't be here to be able to say the things that they want and understand it comes from a place of a good heart, right? So don't take it as a way of animosity, it's not. It's a way for us to move forward and it really depends on what you guys decide today and move on with this day's speeches today because you guys live every day with a lot of responsibility to these students and we hope that you guys are making the best decisions genuinely and wholeheartedly for all of us to be able to partake in. I appreciate you guys giving me this stage, as I said. So don't take it as a way of animosity. It's not. It's a way for us to move forward, and it really depends on what you guys decide today and move on with this day's speeches today, because you guys live every day with a lot of responsibility to these students, and we hope that you guys are making the best decisions genuinely and wholeheartedly for all of us to be able to partake in. I appreciate you guys giving me this stage, as I said, and I hope you guys continue to give other people the stage that they deserve. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Next, we, next we have Mr. Andy Garcia. Mr. Garcia, are you here? Okay. If you would approach the microphone. And the same thing goes, Mr. Roberts will indicate when you have one minute left, and then when your time has expired.
Yes, ma'am. Fellow citizens of Pasadena, faculty and staff of Pasadena ISD, and sitting and newly-elected Pasadena ISD school board members. My name is Mariano Andres Garcia, and I am a 2018 graduate of the dual-language program of Pasadena ISD at Pasadena Memorial High School. I was born and raised in the city, and except for my time in college, I have spent my entire life here. I felt compelled to speak tonight on behalf of citizens that are underrepresented in a school district where their voices need to and should be heard. Furthermore, I am addressing you all today with the intention of sharing why I voted for trustee-elect Cristo Davila, who, as you may already know, will not be sworn in today due to a requested recount by her opponent, Mrs. Marisol Quijano, a recount that was requested when more than a couple hundred voices in our community stood up for Davila rather than Quijano. Cristo is an alumna of the school district as well as a former employee. In addition, she has been a lifelong member of our community. As such, she knows all too well the trials and tribulations that we face here as students, as educators in Pasadena ISD, and as citizens of Pasadena. This alone demonstrates the unique perspective she brings to the board. Moreover, unlike most of the current board members, Cristo is relatable to everyday citizens like myself, especially those of us who live north of Spencer Highway. She is a Latina, just like the over 80% of Latino students at this school district serves. Moreover, she makes an active effort to reach out to the community, and in doing so, with the other candidates of the educators for PISD slate, was able to get out the vote from typically neglected neighborhoods of our community, as well as obtained popular support. I know this because I volunteered for this campaign, and I was pleasantly surprised at the voters we were attempting to reach. It was obvious to me then that Cristo would be a voice on the school board for those who haven't always been represented here. Because of this, I felt to see why there is hesitation among the current board to allow Cristo to assume proceed. The election system used in Harris County is state-of-the-art and has a full paper trail, and we have an elected new leader, and we have elected a new leader for PISD trustee position two. The recount and delay of Cristo swearing in is disrespectful to her and her family, as well as those of us who believe in her message. I now look to the sitting trustees, Board President Vicki Morgan, and outgoing trustee and Board Vice President Marisol Quijano. I went to a total of four schools in Pasadena ISD. Each one had guidelines to success, and each of those included respect. I wish to remind you to treat these new trustees who you'll be swearing in today and at a later date, especially the ones who are not running on the platform you all endorsed, with respect. They deserve, and they command it, and the community this board serves stands behind them. They are no longer political opponents, but rather your peers on the Pasadena ISD school board. Thank you.
So, Mrs. Morgan, I'd like to respond. So our first speaker didn't bring it up specifically, but since you did, sir, I'm just gonna respond. So we have the facts, because I think there's a lot of misinformation. So I just want to be clear. So on May 1st, if you don't know, we had an election here in Pasadena ISD for positions one, two, three, and four. Of course, the election was ordered in accordance with the Texas Election Code, which is very important to understand in this process, and was conducted by the Harris County Elections Office on behalf of PISD, according to the district's contract with Harris County for election services. While on May 1st and into the morning of May 2nd, the district received unofficial results, which you talked about, along with all the members of the public from Harris County, the district received the official election results from Harris County in our office on Tuesday, May 11th. So we had a meeting on May 12th to canvass that vote officially. On May 13th, following the district canvass of votes for the May 1st election and before a certificate of election could be given, which is normal, this is happening in a neighboring school district, it was delivered, it could not be delivered in that time, a petition requesting the recount was submitted in a time that was allowed, okay? Friday was the deadline, so it was within the two-day deadline from the canvassing. This is the Texas Election Code, that's what I want to be very clear about. It identifies the recount supervisor and coordinator, and it makes that the Board of Trustees, whether that's in Pasadena or any other school district in Texas. And it requires their approval if it meets the guidelines, which in this case, it did. Therefore, the Pasadena ISD Board President, who at this time is Vicki Morgan, had to approve the petition requesting a recount on Saturday, May 15th. That was within the 48 hours. It really says within a timely manner, but she did so on Saturday, the 15th, and is in the process of ordering the recount in accordance with Texas Election Code, which we've referred to repeatedly. The ground for the recount request identified in the approved petition is the difference between the total number of votes received by the petitioner and the total number of votes received by the prevailing candidate, and that was less than 10% of the total number of votes, which is why it was a valid recount. Because the petition met the Election Code's criteria, the district must hold the recount. It does not have the authority under the code to stop the recount process or prevent a recount from being held. Accordingly, the district will continue to follow all applicable laws, and the Board President will order and hold a recount for position two in coordination with the Harris County Elections Office, where we're getting all of our guidance and the Secretary of State. Finally, according to the Texas Election Code, the submission of the petition requesting a recount delays the issuance of certificate of election. This is a very short process, and it prohibits the candidate qualification for the office involved in the recount, pending completion of the recount, including any compulsory recanvassing of the votes for that position. This is all on our website, it's a statement that we put out, and this is why the district will not be swearing in position two during tonight's meeting. Under the Texas Constitution, all public officers shall continue to perform their duties until their successors shall be duly qualified. Therefore, the current trustees serving in position two will remain until the recount is complete, and neither candidate is duly qualified to take office and assume the duties and responsibilities of the position. The district will take all necessary action after the completion to make sure the candidate is sworn in and that the qualified candidate takes their term at that time. So Pasadena ISD will continue to follow all the laws, all the rules and regulations, including those contained in the Texas Election Code. It's not a choice, it's a mandate. So we will complete this recount in a timely manner, and for additional information, we keep referring people to the Office of the Texas Secretary of State, which you can find on their website. So I just wanted to say that. We have two candidates that are highly qualified, that are both graduates and longtime residents of this community, and love the children of Pasadena ISD. So thank you for your time. Yes, sir.
Do you want to uphold the law of the state of Texas? Is that correct?
That's correct. You're sworn in to uphold the law. Jack, would you please speak into the mic?
Well, I was gonna let Deanne. Part of, part of, I'm speaking into it. Part of the oath of office for any elected official of the state of Texas, and the first thing it says in there that you'll uphold the laws of the state of Texas, and as Dr. Powell has said, we've got no choice in this matter. So that's all we're doing, is upholding the oath that we swore when we were sworn in here in this office, all of us.
And I think all of our speakers, as passionate as you were, all agree the process should be respected, whether it's your candidate that you chose or another candidate. It's the democratic process, and we're gonna follow it, and we're gonna follow it by the letter of the law.
I appreciate you guys taking the time to rebuttal and explain the context of people that are here. We are educators, and we have standards, so thank you.
We're going to, at this point in time, yes.
Your time has expired. We do not have comments back from the crowd, no matter who it is. All right?
Thank you. All right, we'll move on.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, we're not gonna talk anymore. If we do, I have the right to ask that officer to escort somebody out. So let's just conduct our meeting. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. At this point in time, there are no other public comments according to the open session portion of the agenda, so we're going to move to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion?
You were emailed toward the end because you were not an item on the agenda, so keep moving along, and then we'll get to the last portion. Check your email.
Madam President, I move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts, that we approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. We have completed the personnel section, so we're gonna move to the educational section. First item is for information only, but we're gonna have a presentation by Ms. Elise Neff. Elise, are you here? Yes, you are.
So my husband's motto is improvise, adapt, and overcome. We have a presentation with no sound, so we're adjusting.
Uh-oh.
Okay, so I'll start. Good evening, school board members and Dr. Powell. My name is Elise Neff, and I'm the Coordinated School Health Specialist. I serve as the co-chair for the Shack along with Mary Lou Quintero, a parent from Gardens Elementary. I am here tonight to give to the School Health Advisory Council Board. The School Health Advisory Council is required by law. It states the Board of Trustees of each school district shall establish a local health advisory council to assist the district in ensuring that local community values are reflected in the district's health, education, and instruction. All four meetings were held virtually this year. The meeting dates and times, as well as the minutes for each meeting, can be found on the Pasadena ISD Shack page. The Shack members are composed mostly of parents as well as committee members, and the Shack is supported by the district's staff. The Shack continued efforts to create a diverse membership group this year by utilizing campus wellness teams to invite a parent from their campus to serve on the Shack. Due to the pandemic, the focus of the Shack shifted to communicating with parents and the community about Pasadena ISD's response to COVID-19. Despite the challenges that COVID-19 brought this year, we are so proud of the health and wellness programming the School Health Advisory Council supported in the 2020-2021 school year. You can find the full report of all of the Shack activities for the year in the official Shack Board Report that you have in front of you. We will now see.
Everybody cross your fingers.
The Shack highlight video of this year. Hello, and welcome to the 2020-2021 School Health Advisory Council, or Shack Board Report. We have completed the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative with MD Anderson and Shell Oil. Through the initiative, we were able to install a playground at Mace Smith Elementary and a track at Sparks Elementary. A sun safety grant from MD Anderson provided shade structures for the playgrounds at Red Bluff Elementary and Mace Smith Elementary, as well as sun safety training and gear for all five high school bands, the crossing guards, the lawn care crews, and the health and PE teachers. We are excited to report that two of our campuses were named among America's healthiest schools and were recognized for their dedication to family engagement. Congratulations, Red Bluff Elementary and Sparks Elementary. The work of the Shack is completed within committees based upon the whole school, whole community, whole child model. This model focuses its attention on the child, emphasizes a school-wide approach, and acknowledges learning, health, and the school as being part and reflection of the local community. Each Shack committee is made up primarily of parents and community members and is chaired by a district employee. In the following slides, you will be introduced to each committee and hear about their progress this year.
All the district's physical education special events, including Pump, Pass, and Kick, Big Shootout, Get, Pit, Jog, and Truck and Field, were held with modifications due to COVID-19, but they were all a huge success. The virtual walk for site raised over $26,000 this year. This was our most successful walk-for-site event yet. A big shout-out goes to all of the physical education teachers that made these events possible. New online health education resources were added to support character development, mental health, and the prevention of alcohol abuse, prescription drug abuse, and vaping. The Olympiad is a longstanding tradition in Pasadena ISD, and COVID-19 was not going to keep us from showcasing our students' physical education skills. All 36 elementary schools participated in the 2021 Virtual Olympiad. The Olympiad teams worked hard developing PE skills through video-based routines. We truly are stronger together. Many schools still found fun ways to promote health and physical activity with their students and families with COVID-19 precautions in place, such as walk-to-school events, bike parades, and health fairs. The district's recess guidelines continue to be supported district-wide on elementary campuses this year. The Nutrition Services Department continues to focus on providing fresh, high-quality, healthy meals to all of our students. During the pandemic, we have reimagined how school meals are served to ensure that remote learners receive the same high-quality nutrition. The Nutrition Services Department is ranked by Kroger and Children at Risk as number one in the Houston area, and number two in the state of Texas for the number of meals served during the pandemic. We were also recognized by Food Management Magazine for our recipe and menu development, and we're participating in the Farm Fresh Challenge by serving at least three local Texas products each week. Nutrition Services also created smart snack-approved birthday celebration packs for parents this year. Birthday treats are delivered directly to the students' classroom by our kitchen staff and meet smart snack standards.
Outstanding work. We will now hear from the Family Engagement and Community Involvement Committees now.
A site coordinators and parent coordinators were able to provide families with a variety of support during this year through home visits, technology support, educational platform support, addressing barriers including food insecurities and attendance, hosting parent virtual sessions, and organizing outdoor family events.
I'm gonna read a sentence that was left out. Every first-grade student in the district celebrated Children's Book Day, DIA, in conjunction with the Barbara Bush Foundation, Gulf Coast Credit Union, Pasadena Public Library, CIS, local churches, ACE, and additional PISD departments. Each first grader received a book, backed filled with three bilingual books, family activities, and a bookmark to help commemorate the day. The main theme of these books were to support social, emotional learning.
...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[1797.13]
Thank you so much for your support this past year.
Elise, that's a great presentation. We thank everyone that has been involved in this, and there are probably so many more that have not been recognized, but we certainly appreciate all the hard work, you know, making our community better, and you do it on a daily basis, and we thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Okay, so next is consideration of possible approval for Pasadena ISD high school seniors and juniors to receive one credit for math or English college preparatory courses if the students achieve mastery of the Texas College Bridge Curriculum and complete a fourth-year math and English for credit.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Keanu, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the 2021-2022 Student Dress Code. This is for pre-K through 12.
So move.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick. Was that Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
So, board members, this went through DEC, as it always does, as well as through the principals, as well as cabinet. So just to let you know, I know Ms. Morgan was there at the DEC meeting and heard the feedback that was provided, but it did go through all of those various areas for feedback.
There was a lot of discussion, I think a lot of good discussion, and I think we brought back, you know, a good recommendation. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of Advisetexas Contract and Memorandum of Understanding Agreement for 2021 through 2023 for a cost of $100,000. So move. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion?
So these are just those extra counselors that help with getting kids ready for college and making sure they get the application, the fast file, those pieces together. So just another support level. I know Dobie High School is very interested in getting one, so you may see a future agenda item coming forward.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. I bring your attention to the student achievement that's in your board book or in the book. CTE Automotive Collision Students, Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Scholarship Award, Houston Livestock Show and Rodeo Visual Art Results, Junior Vase Awards, Name That Book Competition Results, and Memorial Maverick Theater Students. We have every single month, every single week, every single day, we have students excelling in this district, and we're proud. Policy section, we have none at this time, so we'll move to the financial section. Consideration of possible approval of the budget amendments.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan. Was that you, Mr. Kendrick?
Yep.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible renewal for automotive, student excess medical, flood, musical instruments, student travel accident, vocational interns accident, crime, general liability, law enforcement liability, cyber liability, and builder's risk insurance programs for 2021 through 2022 for $1,144,773, and approval of the political subdivision Alliance of Texas, PSAT, inter-local agreement with Hidalgo ISD.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion?
Just board members, this is where Roger Montemayor from Gallagher and Joe Blase from McGriff are here. So I got that right this time, I hope.
Are they here for a presentation?
They're just here in case you have any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Thank you, guys, for being here. Anyone have questions? Then we will move to the motion at hand. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible renewal of CSP #20P-041DG for property, boiler, and machinery, educators' legal liability, and crisis management insurance in the amount of $7,394,553.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mr. Bailey, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion?
Question?
Yes, Mr. Kendrick?
Ms. Merka, question? Is the million-dollar increase impacted by the new Red Bluff value?
It's not just the new Red Bluff value. It's all in general, all of this area on the South Side. We are seeing an increase in every school district. We were lucky ours wasn't near as much, but a lot of districts have gone up 35%. And that's because of the storms that we've had recently. And so anytime we have storms that we have to deal with, we see insurance going up.
It's still the south of our tent, I guess, the penalty we pay.
Well, actually, though, we've seen the increases all the way up through Dallas, and Roger and Joe can kind of elaborate on that side of it, but we're seeing insurance increases all over.
Marshall, we're lucky it's that because the storms we've had the last couple of years, the hailstorms we've had recently all over the state of Texas, and insurance is-
Louisiana got hit with two, one right after the other, so it all affects everybody.
Are we at a stabilization point, or are we just going to continue upward?
Yes, ma'am. It is really dependent on weather patterns and catastrophic weather, and everyone in this room is experiencing it and familiar with it. And the hope is that we'll have something calmer this year in the Gulf than we had last summer, which was a record-setting year, the most named storms in Gulf Coast history, and no more repeats of the winter freeze and that sort of thing.
You know, the snow was nice, but for the insurance industry, it was expensive.
Pipes break in your house or your building.
Yeah, yeah.
You could do it off the snow.
Thank you.
I'll add just a little bit more color to that. So we do have an open claim from the freeze events that happened. It is still not closed. Dr. Powell, you'd be pleased to know Richard Booker is our third-party adjuster that's handling that, who also helped us through the Harvey events, and it's been a priority, just like it was then. But one of the difficulties and challenges in the marketplace was that open claim. Today, the reserves are set at about $1,200,000. We think it'll settle somewhere between $800,000 and $900,000. But just wanted to give you some color, too, to some of the additional challenges.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will add, when we first started, the insurance, the three of us estimated that our insurance would go up by $1.5 million, and we came in lower than that. And so I'm very proud of the hard work they have done because every time they bring me something, I say, "No, let's try again." And so they got it down, and they did a fabulous job on saving us some money. Thank you very much. Thank you very much for being here.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Let's move to the operations section. Consideration of possible approval of the purchase of a driveway easement from Heritage Homes of Texas, LLC, crossing the Riverstone Falls Drive Street. Dedication for the purpose of ingress and egress into the new Thompson Intermediate School property in the amount of $1.
So move. Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Ms. Keanu. Discussion? Can't beat that dollar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of the purchase of a driveway easement for Riverstone Ranch at Clear Creek Homeowners Association, Inc., for the purposes of ingress and egress into the new Thompson Intermediate School property in the amount of $1.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Consideration of possible approval of change order #01 for the Roof Recovery Package 3 project in the amount of $8,402.39.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Fernandez. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it. Motion carries. Now, construction update. Is there any, are there any comments or questions to the construction update?
Madam President?
Yes.
Can I just make a comment?
You bet.
Superintendent and fellow board members, you've heard me the last couple of months talk about this, but material cost is going out the roof. And if you've got projects that you've got on the books or need to be done, you need to do something. Most of these people in here realize that, you know, you don't buy a 2x4 for $2 or $3 anymore. Now, and I encourage you to, if you want to, you don't have to go to the lumberyard, just go over here to Home Depot, but 2x4x6 is about a dollar a foot or better. And so people are buying projects that are supposed to be started. If you'll follow up with some of the other school districts, they're buying steel and so on and so forth upwards of six to seven months out. And they can make an order today, but they won't get it till, for the six to seven months. And so I won't be here, and Jack won't be here, but I encourage y'all to do something because for a while, you're not going to see prices go down. It's just going to go up. Your needs are continuing. The needs are there, and they're continuing to go up. So you've got to do something. And if nothing, get your contracts, get your prices set where you no longer have to worry about the prices being jacked up because the cost of construction is climbing every day, and it's almost scary. People going out and buying homes, the starter home today is what a final home would have cost 10, 15 years ago. And so it's just unbelievable. And so, is Kevin here?
Yes.
Kevin, giddy up, man, because it is not looking good. And so you've got infrastructure issues, and like I said, you're going to have to, and you're going to have to put your thinking cap on because it's ugly. And I deal with construction all the time. And so I will tell you, it is not a good place to be. Do something. Don't wait on somebody else. Do something. That's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much, Mr. Roberts.
No problem.
Okay, at this time, we're going to begin with the swearing-in of the board members. We will proceed with the swearing-in of the newly elected members of the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees. I have issued certificates of election for positions number one, three, and four, and I've asked Mr. Dexter Joyner to deliver the certificates to each candidate, and he and Ms. Susan Croft to assist the district in swearing-in these candidates by administering the oath of office to each. Please note that I have not issued a certificate of election to position number two. This is because a petition requesting a recount was filed following the district's canvas of votes for that position and before a certificate of election was issued and delivered to the elected candidate. According to the Texas Election Code, the submission of a petition requesting a recount delays the issuance of a certificate of election and prohibits candidate qualification for the office involved in the recount, pending completion of the recount, including any subsequent canvas of the votes based upon the recount. Under the Texas Constitution, all public officers shall continue to perform the duties of their offices until their successors shall be duly qualified. Therefore, Ms. Marissa Keanu will remain a member of this board in position two until either she or her successor is duly qualified to take office and assume the duties and responsibilities of this position. Because I'm not aware of any fact that would prohibit the qualification of the elected candidates for positions number one, three, and four, we will proceed with the swearing-in of those candidates. So at this time, will the board member elects for positions number one, three, and four step forward onto the platform in front of the board table?
Hey, Ellen, good luck. All the mistakes have already been made in this chair. Listen to these people. There's a lot of wisdom here. And I'll tell you what, somebody told me, Harvey Turner told me to sit down and be quiet for about a year. It made a lot of sense. So good luck to them.
At this time, the-
Is this room like 12 years old? Test their seats in the audience. She's coming around the bend.
She'll be there soon.
Come around the bend. Okay.
So at this time, we've already done that. Mr. Joyner, have you delivered the certificates of office to the board member elects for positions one, three, and four? Are you ready to stand to conduct the swearing-in ceremony, Mr. Joyner? And Ms. Croft is prepared to administer the written oaths upon your declaration that the board member elects are qualified to assume their respected offices. Mr. Joyner and Ms. Croft, I declare the board member elects are qualified for office as follows. Position number one, Paola Gonzalez Fusiliar. Position number three, Nelda Sullivan. And position number four, Casey Phelan. Mr. Joyner, you may proceed to conduct the swearing-in ceremony and administer the oath of office.
Thank you. In a moment, I will ask each of you to raise your right hand and recite the oath of office. Following this resignation, each of you will step over to Mrs. Croft at the board table, sign your written oath of office, which is the same as the one orally recited. And Mrs. Croft will fix her seal as a notary public to the written oath, thereby concluding the swearing-in ceremony and administering the oath of office to allow you to assume your duties and responsibilities as new board members. Now, the moment we've all been waiting for, please raise your right hand and repeat at committee. Aye, and so do you. You softly swear upon-
You softly swear upon-
That I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office-
The duties of the office.
As school board trustee-
As school board trustee.
For the Pasadena Independent School District-
For the Pasadena Independent School District.
Of the state of Texas-
The state of Texas.
And will best to my ability-
And will best to my ability. And will best to my ability.
Preserve...
Preserve.
Protect and defend...
Protect and defend.
The Constitution...
The Constitution.
And the laws of the United States...
And the laws of the United States.
And of this state...
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And now, each of you may step over so that you, so that Ms. Croft can notarize your written oath of office.
You can go ahead and go up there. You can go ahead and go up there. Upon the board, anywhere that you find a empty seat.
I want to see that.
Yeah, I want to see that.
Yeah.
You have to look at it.
Fred has lost a lot of weight.
That's got to be funny.
Put your arm there.
Madam President, the oath of office for Pasadena Independent School District Board of Trustees positions, positions one, three, and four, have been administered to Paola Gonzalez Fusiliere, Nelda Sullivan, and Casey Phelan. And each individual is ready to assume the duties and responsibilities of their offices.
Thank you, Mr. Joyner and Ms. Croft. Paola Gonzalez Fusiliere, Nelda Sullivan, and Casey Phelan, congratulations to each of you and welcome to the Pasadena ISD Board of Trustees. As new members of this board, you've already done it, but I say you may now join us at the board table. I want to take one last opportunity at this time to once again thank Mr. Jack Bailey and Mr. Fred Roberts for their service to this district. Now, at this time, I would like to afford each one of the new trustees to introduce their families, thank whatever community they would like to do so, and I'm going to give you a couple of minutes to do that. So, we'll start with you, Paola, if you would do that, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Well, I can't name everyone, or we'll be here all night. But I want to thank my husband Johnny's here, my daughter Bella, Abby, Josiah, Judah, Micah, my mom's here, my sisters Angela, Yvonne, Andrea, my brother-in-law Sal, my in-laws Johnny and Teresa, I'm trying to figure out where everybody is, and my counseling community in the back who's here to support me, and many others here from the community that I know, my sister-in-law, my brother-in-law, and so many others that helped me get to where I am. Jose's over there. I'm trying to look around to make sure I don't miss anyone, so nothing, I'm sorry if I did miss you. Oh, there's Judah. Say hi, Judah. So, thank you so much for being here. I appreciate your vote and your support. Thanks for being here tonight, and I look forward to serving in this capacity.
Ms. Sullivan, you're old hat at this, but would you like to say something?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to my fellow board members. It's been such a pleasure working with them to do what's best for every child in this district, and I'm so proud of the accomplishments that we've made. As you saw tonight, we recognized just a few, but you see more and more of the accomplishments that are brought forward by the educators of our district. And it goes without saying that we have an excellent leader in Dr. Powell. And I want to thank... As I said earlier, it's been my privilege to have served on this board for a number of years, and I learn something every week about this board and something that's great and greater. We're putting out students that are learners, students that have been educated. Just a few weeks ago, we graduated the largest number of students from Pasadena Independent School District, over 400, that received an associate's degree from San Jacinto College before they ever received their high school diploma. No other state, no other district in the state of Texas can claim this. So, we do have a wonderful school district, thanks to all the support employees, to all of our educators, and to all of our administrators. And I want to thank my family for standing with me and for my son, who's here tonight. I love you, son.
Okay, tell me the word. And last but not least, Mr. Casey Phelan.
Nobody told me we were going to be, we had to speak.
Too bad. Get used to it.
So, first and foremost, I have my older brother here, Mark, and his wonderful wife, Lisa, my hero, my rock, my beautiful wife, Diane, who's guided me and just been here for me everywhere. There's a special group of guys back here, I want them to come out so everybody can see them. They're kind of ugly, but they're, these are my boys. These are my K-NOT guys that I ran with for about seven years, yes. They're a bunch of guys over here. I can't tell you how humbled and how proud I am to sit on this board with these people. I'm a little intimidated, and I stand in the shadows of Jack Bailey and Fred Roberts. I don't know what I'm going to do, but I'm going to try my best, so.
You're going to do awesome.
Oh, and my brother-in-law.
Oh, yes. I was wondering about that.
Well, they're both...
Make her stand up. Make her stand up.
They're both Trojans, so there's a problem.
Better not forget her, but...
I'm dead. I'm dead, I know. I'm walking home. Anybody?
Big mistake, Casey.
Okay. The board does not need to adjourn at this time, it's listed in the agenda. We will reorganize the board following the conclusion of the recount. So, at this time, we're going to move on to public comments section, and first, we have Crystal Davila to talk about the recount process. Crystal, you have three minutes. I'm going to ask Mr. Fernandez, will you please give her a clue when she has one minute left, if you would stand, and then tell her when her time has expired?
Has started?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, my name is Crystal Davila, future trustee of Pasadena ISD, and I am 28, a 28-year-old high school math teacher. I graduated from Pasadena High School 10 years ago, and taught there for five years after college. I am here because Maricel Quijano does not understand that this change is inevitable. She is using the law to delay something that is bound to happen. Money can't buy this election, which is me, a person in Pasadena who wants a change.
Wait just one second, please. You may not use any names, okay?
Okay. That's the last one. If this situation is happening to me, where the information is not given to me in a timely manner, and I feel ignored and bullied, then this is exactly the same way teachers, custodial workers, support staff, families, and students in Pasadena ISD feel when they don't have adequate representation in the district. That is why people elected me as a trustee, and I want to go over some examples in the district. The school district did not provide water to students this year. The district asked students to bring their own water to school. This is a simple problem where the district did not invest money into providing students with water, but somehow they saw it acceptable to approve a $27 million building. A couple of years ago, we went an entire week of school without AC in Pasadena High School. After the second day of no AC, we had multiple teachers go to Walmart to buy fans out of their own money, their own pocket, because this district did not provide relief to Pasadena High School. It is not uncommon to have a day here and there without AC in this district. As a reminder, the majority of people voted for me. Families and teachers in the district voted for me. Pasadena needs better representation. Every member on the school board prior to this election lived south of Spencer Highway. No one represented the north side of Pasadena or South Houston. My victory changed that because as soon as I got sworn in as a trustee, I will be the only one representing North Pasadena. Running for school board in Pasadena ISD is difficult because we had to touch base with residents all over the district. The district does not have single district seats, and it makes it difficult for families and parents to share their concerns about the district if there is no school board member living near them. I want Pasadena to have better representation, and that is the reason I decided to run. I'm a product of Pasadena ISD and came back to work with my community after graduating college. I am an educated bilingual Latina who wants the best for her students, and I know there's a long road to gaining better representation. As a Spanish speaker, I will be able to communicate with our Spanish-speaking parents and students. I do not know if any of the other school board members had this capacity before the election. My ability to communicate with the large portion of our district in my native tongue will help facilitate conversations between the community and other trustees. My victory is hopefully the beginning to bring in better schools for our children and getting better representation in the district. Thank you.
So, Ms. Davila, I'd like to respond. I'd like to respond.
So, just to let you know, as an employee, I would have appreciated a phone call from you. That never happened. There was no issue with water that any student, any staff member, or any parent brought to my attention. The only person that called was Yan Rabey, who was running for the board, and she called on the day that Norma Penny died, and I had Troy McCarley call her back. So, if we don't start working with facts, we're not going to be able to work together to improve this school district. So, please work with facts and not misinformation, because that's something that we have to do as a team of eight. Just know that. It's very important. I'm a graduate of this district. I've spent my entire career in North Pasadena changing the lives of students. They'll attest to that on a regular basis. I will tell you, I met one teacher at Dobie High School that told me that just this week, and I'm here for the students of Pasadena ISD, and that breaks my heart. It really breaks my heart. Thank you.
I would like to, I would like to say something since, since you're addressing me and you're face-to-face, so that I can address the people in this room. I'm a highly-educated Latina as well, and who was raised in this district, whom my children went to this district, and as a board member, I, I, I'm influenced of all the, all the students in this district. Yes, the people in North Pasadena, and the people of all Pasadena, okay? No, I don't buy the election, okay? I have been serving my community for over 23 years, and I have expected nothing in return, okay? I have done this to help my community, and I will do it for as long as I can, whether that means till the end of the recount or for longer. I don't care. I'm not doing this for me. I'm doing this for the staff in Pasadena ISD, for the students in Pasadena ISD, and for the future of Pasadena ISD, because I fear the future. I fear for the future of Pasadena ISD, because what has occurred today is very sad.
Hmm.
Okay? Because I think somebody that's coming into the board should be trying to unite the community, not divide.
Hey, guys, we're going to ask you to leave if you can't hold to a peace, okay?
Okay? You should be respecting every, every person in this room.
They're all because you're bullying us. Tell them the same thing.
Okay? I have been respecting you as an individual my entire campaign. I have not spread lies about you, and I would not do it about anyone.
Is your time limited as well?
Okay? That's my answer. And the only thing you've done is try to contact the media, and they have not written stories.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan.
But talk the truth. Talk the truth, please.
Let's, let's move on. Is Mr. Edward, Edward Valdez here? He wants to speak about the administration building. Mr. Valdez, you have three minutes. Mr. Fernandez, will time keep? Stand up when one minute is left, and then when your time has expired.
Your time has started.
Good evening. My name is Edward Valdez, and I'm a recent graduate from Pasadena High School.
We can't hear you.
And I'm a...
There you go.
Okay, thank you. Excuse me. I am a former Gero to C-Kidet and a PHS golfer, and I am here to speak up against a construction of a $27 million administration building. And I think rebuild our school is more important, because student needs a good quality building and education. Our school has old restroom, and our restroom needs a new wall and floors. Also, our school needs a better air conditioning system to keep cool, so that way our students do not have to go outside to get cool. And I wish Mrs. Sevegra and Ms. Gomez can hear this. Stop wasting our money in the administration building and fix our school. Thank you.
Next, we have Yasmin Davila, current elections and public transparency in the recount
Hello, I'm here to address just Pasadena ISD in general and the school board. I have helped with the campaign with my sister Crystal Davila, and the whole time, I have experienced, just like my sister, the frustration, but also just the neglect and the hostility of the staff that has worked with y'all. And just looking at the history of Pasadena ISD, or Pasadena in general, like, if we want to go back to the roots, we hosted, or not hosted, but the KKK used to live here. So, like, and we're talking about the people and the demographic that has changed, like, that representation is not there. I have not felt secure, or I have felt the gap going to UT. I have felt my education not being as well as the other folks, and I know that y'all say y'all care about the students, but it doesn't, it's not reflected in the schools that we attended or that I attended, specifically here in North Pasadena. You see a lot of the community just being neglected, and I don't even see the representation here. And I know Quijano is a Latina, but you don't see that. Like, she, she's wealthy, she doesn't talk to the community, she's not here with the community, and we need that. We need educators on there. How is it that all of y'all on this board aren't educators or have any background in education, but yet y'all are responsible for all of the things that are going down in the school district? I just don't see how that is something that makes sense to all of us and something that we have let happen for decades. We need a change, and it's not sad, and we're not attacking anybody here. We're talking about things that have happened and are currently happening and will continue to happen if we don't change and we don't put new people on there, like Paola, like my sister. We need to change, and I don't see it here, and I wish I did, and I really do think...
You have one minute.
I really do think that we need to look into the community. We have the community up here. We have, if anything, my sister has brought people together, not just my sister, but Yan Rabey, and the way that they have been treated throughout the whole campaign just goes to reflect on y'all, and that's what I want to say, it goes to reflect how poorly y'all see anybody criticizing, anybody looking into the details, and how hard it is to look into these facts on the website.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you.
Next, Mario Hernandez, why I voted for Crystal Davila. One more opportunity, is Mario Hernandez here? We'll move on to Cesar Espinosa, voter suppression in Pasadena.
Your time has started.
Good evening. My name is Cesar Espinosa, and I'm executive director of Fiel, and I am here today because the election was done. People chose who they voted, and I completely... wholeheartedly agree that if it's mandated by law, y'all have to do it, but they didn't have to be, there could have been a concession, there could have been somebody that took their loss and said, you know what, the people of Pasadena who are here have voted, and they have chosen their choice candidate to lead this district, to continue to lead this district, and we must respect, and the same respect that you all, every single person in here, including the people in the back are asking for, is the exact same respect that we are asking for. We are not here to cause trouble, and it's a shame that you think that we're here to cause trouble, because we're not, we're just here to speak up and speak out for what we believe is right and for fair representation in our community. If you didn't understand what Jared just said, please go seek a translator or go seek another language, because richness and diversity and multilingualism is key and is factual here in Pasadena, Texas, where 80% of your families are Spanish-speaking. So, somebody just said that they didn't know that there was a water problem, hey, maybe you didn't go out and talk to the people that we talked to that come to us with complaints about the things that are going on. So, look, I brought you the first donation of water that will serve 24 students, and we are committed to donate a single, a bottle for every single student in Pasadena ISD if we need to, because water is a human right, such as education, and you as elected officials must take these issues on, and instead of spending money on crazy technology or a building, start at home first, start in North Pasadena first, because for too often, we have seen one side of the tracks and the other side of the tracks, and I for one am tired of seeing my community living on the other side of the tracks. We have been out there, we have been in every single Pasadena school to offer scholarships and financial aid for students, because sometimes there's just not enough people, and we appreciate the district welcoming us, but at the same time, just like we see our people living and we talk to our people every single day, we ask each and every single one of you to do the same, because we were out there, and water is one of the things that they ask for, and it's a shame that you are not even able to provide that to students, and you can talk facts all you want, but a certain person on this ward could have conceded and could have moved on, because looking for 226 votes is going to be very hard to find.
Next, we have Alexa Gomez, trustee elect, Crystal Davila. Alexa, are you here? Are you present? Okay, we'll move on to the next, and that's Ms. Jen Robey, and she's going to speak on bullying, quality drinking water, and the new administration building. Ms. Robey, you know you have three minutes. Mr. Fernandez, you will stand when one minute is left and notify her when 30 seconds are left.
Your time has started.
Good evening, school board members and superintendent, congratulations to trustee Sullivan for continued community service on the school board, trustee Phelan, trustee elect Fusiliere Gonzalez, and trustee elect Davila. I am speaking to follow-up on my previous appeals that has been left without responses. I did not get a response back about bullying at the schools from Dr. Deanne Powell. Is the policy of Pasadena ISD to tolerate bullying? Because the problem is not going away by itself. I would also like to know how Superintendent Powell is addressing the drinking water situation at the schools. Students are suffering.
Ms. Robey, I'm going to stop you for a second, you need to go through the process for bullying, you need to go through the process if you have a complaint, you need to go through that process.
I addressed it last school board.
You need to go through the process in the proper way.
And no one responded.
In the proper way, thank you. Go ahead with your...
Students are suffering from not getting drinking water at school, and yes, I, I think it's better if Dr. Deanne Powell goes to schools and reach out to students and teachers to ask about this, this problem, and to athletes after practice. This problem is not going away by itself either. On the topic of the $27 million administration building, what is the status of the contract bids? When one is considering whether to renovate or build a new structure, one should go through due diligence by looking to see what the cost would be to renovate the existing building and how long the repairs would endure. For foundation work, I inquired with several foundation companies, since Superintendent Powell mentioned foundation issues with this building. All responded by saying to look at the structural engineering report. I requested a structural engineering report from this administration, for this administration building, and it does not exist. This leads me to think that due diligence was not executed. I urge you to be fiscally responsible and stop the plans for the $27 million administration building and fix our schools that are visibly in need of it. There is an ongoing petition that has more than 1,348 signatures and more than 11,000 views from people who are, they feel like they would be intimidated if they signed that petition, and I think that's what's going on in the school district that needs to stop. Thank you.
So, again, I would just share that in the last decade, we've spent $542 million on our campuses, and I do go out to schools on a weekly basis, as board members know, as you receive in my weekly wind down, I think staff, students, I was at the Dobie softball game, I was at the Pasadena High School playoff game, I have a student advisory committee that talks to me about the priorities of the district and what they see. We've had lots of water donations, and it's been given to any campus that has requested it, much more than what you're seeing here, trailer full of water has been dispersed across the district, we have water filling stations, that's our new standard for campuses, and the list goes on and on, $36 million in scholarships last year, the largest early college high school graduating class in Texas, the AP scores keep going up, the AP placement participation keeps going up, the successes of this district, whether it's dual language, fully pre-K across the district, the list goes on and on. So, I'm going to defend my staff, I love Pasadena ISD staff members, I'm going to defend the students who love this district and do amazing things, this was just a small peak tonight. Across the district, across the board, our students are accelerating, we're the number one school district in the greater Houston area when you compare us with the number of low socioeconomic students that we serve. We don't use it as excuse, we use it as setting the bar high and getting every kid there, and until my last day on this job, I will continue to break the records that have been set in this district, guaranteed.
Yes.
I'd like to say something.
Okay.
Not been on this board 32 years, and we have had elections, and we've had bond elections, and since the last 15 to 20 years, every bond election we asked for was passed overwhelmingly by this community. Every time we asked for a bond issue, it happened. Why? Because we're meeting the needs, building-wise, educational-wise, more than probably any other district in the state of Texas. And you can bury your head in the sand and say, well, this is not happening. Well, let me show you an example. We're the number one school district in the state in feeding people during the pandemic when nobody could get any in class or anything else. Three and a half million meals were prepared by the school district for our community and for our kids. So, to say there's a north and a south is not true. Pasadena High School, when it was built, was the first high school, the flag high school of this district, absolutely. We went to the community and said, we want to build a new Pasadena High School. Community said, we don't think we want to move the flag school. So, we gave the voters a choice. They voted to keep it where it is, and we've spent millions of dollars on Pasadena High School to try to bring it up to where it should be, and it's still a flagship school. We went into Harvey in August and the fall in November, same year, we asked for a tax increase and a bond issue, which is unheard of. Then it was told by other principals, other superintendents, you're crazy. You know what happened? The community passed it. Why did they pass it? Because they trust what's going on with their kids. Now, my feeling about this thing is it's going to work out, this election's going to work out one way or the other. This is a team of seven and eight, including the superintendent, and if you want this goodness to keep going forward, then we have to work as a unit to do the thing we need to do for everybody in the district, north or south.
Absolutely, thank you, Marshall. We're going to set the date for the next regular meeting, suggest Tuesday, June 22, 2021, do I hear a motion?
Second.
Second? Motion by Mr. Fernandez, was that you, Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Seconded by Ms. Sullivan, discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Ayes have it, motion carries. No further business to come.